I was just going with it.
All right, looks like we're on. Okay, let's get started. We welcome the school board and superintendent to this work session. He's going to take some time and go through their budget with us. And before you start, Mr. Telet, we've had, all of us have a rough two years. And I just want to say, I'm sure council feels exactly as I feel, that not only has the school board and you and your staff, and certainly every teacher that is in every school, I think that you've done a miraculous job of keeping this train on the rails. There's some rough patches for you, but as a school board, you just did a magnificent job, and we're proud of you. We're really proud of you, and you have made this city the envy of many school systems around us. And I hear it all the time. So with that said, we'd love to hear about your budget.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Thanks for having us here, members of council. Mr. Wheeler, it's an honor to be here tonight and talk with you a little bit about the financial side of running schools. I prepared just a very brief presentation tonight. You all have seen our budget, been chewing on that, I'm sure, for some time now. So I'm going to just hit some highlights of what separates this budget from last year's budget. A lot of the things in our system are consistent. One of the things that you find in public school education budgets, and Pecosin is no exception, is about 80-plus percent of the budget goes into human resources. We're a business for people by people. So a few years back, you all will remember when all the school systems, all government agencies were tightening the belt during the recession in the late 2009, 2010 school years, and you all remember those times well. We were all trying to figure out how to cut budgets without reducing staff, and the short answer to that is it's almost impossible. I remember speaking at a school board meeting back home one time when we were asked questions from our county government to find ways to cut large sums of money, and we said, there's no way to do it. We could turn the lights off, we could quit running transportation, we could quit feeding kids, and you still can't get to the lion's share of the budget because it's human resources. So that's true now, but what I'm going to talk about is a few highlights that separate, again, this budget from last year's budget. And it represents, and as you all know, the elephant in the room is that we don't have a state budget yet, so we're all wondering what exactly is going to happen. But we do feel good about it because of the fact that we do know that in Richmond, they're sitting on pretty strong revenue. So all the out forecasting indicates that they have a positive budget to share with us, so we don't have any indication that the parts of it that affect Pecosin schools are not going to be funded. But of course, it's not over until it's over. So the net increase in state funding for Pecosin schools is just over $1.2 million. So it's a sizable increase, and the vast majority of that comes in the form of a 5% pay increase for staff. So we're excited about that. That's something that we do expect all school divisions around state to try to find a way to fund. The challenge in it is always the same story. They promote X percent of a pay raise for staff, and then it falls back on the local community to find the portion of that that's unfunded, which is about 49%. So a total increase for Pecosin schools to fund that 5% pay increase for next year is over $800,000, $840-some thousand. So in order to make that happen, it requires more help. So we put in our budget that 5% pay compensation for all of our staff. And in addition to that, you all have probably been following the minimum wage increase that's phased in over a period of time. We have substitutes, cafeteria monitors, and other employees that that directly affects. With that pay increase to $12, that's another piece of the budget that requires an increase. In addition, as around the country, we're seeing an increase in health insurance premiums, and ours is representative of about 6%. We originally started negotiating at 11%, and we've gotten down to 6% without co-pay increases, so we feel good about that. And we're on a two-year guaranteed rate, so with no increase on our dental package. We did do an audit. We've been, since I arrived here a couple of years ago, believe it or not, we've been interested in looking at how our employees who coach our kids athletic supplements compare to other school divisions. And we just conducted an audit and found that in some pockets, we were right in line, even a couple pockets, we were ahead of neighboring school divisions, but in some areas, we were grossly behind. So we've added in this budget an increase for certain coaches. They spend a lot of time with our kids, many of them are community members that work with us in our schools. So it's a small, in relative terms to this budget, just under $10,000, allows us to increase and be very competitive when we compare our coaching supplements around the region. And finally, in order to comply with laws that govern I-POP, which is our preschool program, we have to increase two full-time employees, that we'll hire a pair of professionals in those roles. So those are the big, five big-ticket items in our budget as compared to last year, and it does represent about a 6.87% increase, $1.7 million, including state, local, and federal funds over last year. And you'll notice the big slice of that pie is instruction. Almost 73% goes directly in the classroom. So that's where we spend our money, that's where you get your bang for your buck. I've been saying this for some years now, there's, Bill and Melinda Gates launched a massive study some years ago to study what separates great schools from not-so-great schools. They contracted with four major universities and spent millions of dollars to study it. And their conclusion, I could have told them for free, it's great teachers and great adults working with children is what matters. And so that's where this budget is a clear investment, it's putting money in the classroom and allowing us to hire, retain, train, resource, and support great adults who care about our kids every day. And that's what has always separated Pecosin schools from other schools, and that's what will continue to separate us and make us continue that great tradition of excellence. So that's what our budget is in a nutshell. And I have been involved in budgeting for schools for 30 years now, and I've never presented a budget, especially an ambitious budget, asking for a sizable pay increase to the governing body that holds the purse strings and had them roll their sleeves up and come back and say, we're going to do that for you, even though that's not easy, but we're also going to add an additional $168,000 in budget. And I just want to say publicly, I've never experienced that, but I can't tell you what impact that's going to have for our folks. Randy, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, and the fact that you guys are considering such a thing to take us not only where we ask for, but one step ahead to help us do that hard work in a national teacher shortage of hiring, retaining, and resourcing the very best adults we can have working. Thank you. I can't say enough about your staff, Randy, and this community. You've heard me say before, you can judge the health of a community by how it takes care of its oldest and youngest citizens, and Pecosin does it better than anybody else. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Telet, thank you, sir. Any questions, superintendent?
Let's say something.
Yeah, that's pretty good. You got through that. Your kind comments, we appreciate, but this guy right here, and Kim, and Lee, Christie, and Tanya back there somewhere, they're the ones that did the heavy lift. And I don't know one single council member that asked one question about that. We certainly do, you know, work it out, work it out, and it worked out, exactly like I think this council would want it to work out, to take care of our children. And so if there are no questions of Telet or any of the school board members, any comments?
No. Everybody's happy.
I haven't heard of it.
Okay, we're done. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Seven minutes, that wasn't bad.
I was close to her five-minute estimate.
You're actually a pretty good bet.
Thank you. See you later.
Okay. Thank you. See you. Okay. Thank you. See you. Okay. Thank you. See you later. Okay. Thank you. See you. 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 Okay. Thank you. See you.
Remember, there's about 20 seconds. Yeah, we're good to go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our council meeting tonight. If you would all stand, we will have an invocation. I pledge my allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we request your presence in these chambers tonight, and we ask that you grant us just a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues of our city. Pray for all for this city, and we pray for everyone that calls it their home. We ask that you would go with us tonight, guide us and direct us, and be with us at all times, and we make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
We are the beings to the power of the United States of America, and here we are, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item. On our agenda is our audience of visitors. If there is anyone in our audience who would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Seeing none, move on to approval of minutes. We have two sets, a work session April 11th and a regular session April 11th.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the work session of April 11th, 2022, and the regular session of April 11th, 2022.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the work session minutes and the regular session minutes. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's proposed FY 2023 annual financial plan and tax levies and fees. Do council have any comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll then open the public hearing, and if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing until action required by us. Let's move to old business. First item is sale of publicly owned property located on Coaston Avenue identified as Tax Map File Number 20-1-36. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you will recall at your last meeting, you had a public hearing at which time all the sealed bids, which we only had received one, for this property were opened and read aloud by the clerk. Your options at this point, you can move forward to authorize the sale. You can decide for whatever reason or no reason that you're not comfortable with this and basically just turn down the bid. This is not like an auction. You're not required to accept it. Or should you need to, you could table or postpone it if you have additional questions that have been answered to this point. We await your direction on how you'd like to proceed.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance for the city of Coaston, Virginia granting the purchase of publicly owned property located at 1013 Coaston Avenue. Second. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions from anyone? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Move on to new business. First item, ordinance for fiscal year 2022 for general fund, crime justice assistant grant funding, police department. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Good morning, council.
Evening, sir.
I've been here before in reference to similar items. Again, this is money that was held up in litigation at the federal level that didn't have anything to do with moving the city of Coaston specifically. And this particular section from the crime justice assistance grant comes from the federal fiscal year 2020 funds that are first rated in that federal year. In March of this year, we were notified by the Department of Criminal Justice Services that we were being awarded $2,232 from the fiscal 2020 funds. And then, one of the things that we take a lot of pride in in our department is the things we do with and for our community. And with this money, what we want to do with that is to enhance our RAG program, RAG progression defense, self-defense training program that started pre-COVID, but had to take a break, and that we're planning to get started back up here in the near future. But this money will allow us to do is buy a couple of, buy some safety suits where we can actually have hands-on training with the techniques that are discussed and keep everybody safe in the process. And so, before you deny, there's an ordinance to accept appropriate that grant funding to the police department.
Hey, thank you, chief. Well done. How's our dog?
Dog's doing great. Looking hard every day.
Does he actually out?
Yes, sir. He's out every day.
Oh, okay.
And it takes all it has handwritten to do to keep up.
All right. Okay. Someone prepare with the motion for the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the burnt justice assistance grant and making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2022.
Second. All right, motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Any questions, concerns, comments, none? Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Kim. All right, the last item on the new business is approval of a standard operating procedure for board and commission appointments. Randy, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you are aware, we've been working on this together for, well, really, we began in earnest last summer and picked up, picked up speed at the beginning of this year. What we've attempted to do as a staff team of four is to try to glean what the consensus discussion was from your work session, and I think we've done that with the possible exception of a couple of points which I'll, I'll reference. But before I do that, you'll, one of the things that council talked about at some length was not only its SOP, but its expectation for those persons that the council appoints. And we tried to capture that not only in the SOP, but we also included, for your reference, an updated copy of a boardback application. You'll see that we actually put what we felt the council's expectations are right on the application itself. So, so the folks will start with an understanding that if they put themselves for to be considered and are selected, that this is going to be the... No misunderstandings with that regard. Generally speaking, we got good feedback on input to the draft, and also, as we prepared it, the only item that I am aware of that there is continuing difference of opinion amongst members of council relates to the interviews and specifically on the second page of the SOP in the interview section, under interviews, paragraph one, and it really relates to which of your appointees are appointed. Standard interviews and which would be discretionary. I expect there may be one or more motions to clarify the council's thoughts on that. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Randy? Any comments from council?
I don't know if this is the point to make the comments, but I...
It is.
Okay, good. Regarding the interviews, I had a conversation with Carrie this afternoon, and I started thinking, the one question, why do we do interviews? And I started thinking to myself why we would do interview in the first place, like, why do we have any kind of interviews? And basically, I came down with some answers. To assess and verify the qualifications that a person articulates in their application or their resume, to see how the applicant responds to questions similar to what may come before them on a board or a commission, for us to learn traits of the applicant that cannot be gained through a review of their resume, to allow the council and the applicant the chance to learn if they might be a right fit for the board in question, and basically to get all council members on board with the appointment process. As I've said before, like, in our work session, I think that there should be, I was looking as to which boards and commissions we should have interviews, actual interviews, in-person interviews, I'm calling it, with. And I came up with the school board, planning commission, and economic development, because everybody was pretty much in line with the school board and the planning commission, and I added the economic development authority, and I started looking at, why would I want this? And the reason I wanted that was basically, those three of the seven boards are identified in the city charter versus we have over 14 different boards and commissions, but those are three of seven identified in the charter. An appointment to one of these three will require the applicant to complete and submit a financial disclosure statement or statement of economic interest. No other board appointments have that same requirement. Similarly, the actions of the school board and the economic development authority are part of the annual end-of-fiscal-year audit. I feel that if they're not required to provide the city with their, if they are required to provide the city with their personal financial information, then we should cancel. Why would the council not wish to interview them? So I think that those three boards and commissions should be part of the actual interview process, and the other ones would be, like Randy said, would be the option to the city council.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Any other comments?
I totally agree with everything he said, and we do have the option. My objection was to make those mandatory for council, where we're tying ourselves, where we absolutely have to. And in some cases, we may or may not really need to. And I think putting a "may" in there gives us a lot of flexibility that if we put shell, county ties our hands mighty tight, and that is unnecessary. That's my only comment.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll make the comment. I agree with everything Keith said, okay? And I agree with what Carrie said, okay? And the primary reason is because of the history that I've realized from the years I've been on the city council, and that most of the time, we only have one or two applications. If we, if we regularly had a lot of applications, then I might feel differently, okay? Now, the school board, I want an interview in every case, because I think it requires that, and I would, I would want to require it in any case, because if somebody goes up to our school board, that's a very, very significant position. However, and I wish we had many applications for most of our positions, but most of the time, we do not. And so, if we have a, a position that's open and we have one applicant that we know and it's a good applicant, then to automatically require an interview, borders will be ridiculous. However, if we don't know that applicant, we still have the option to do it if we want to. And so, I, I think the requirement for the school board should exist, but I think we ought to have the option to not do that for the others to do it if we want.
Okay, there's been, I know there's been a lot of discussion today, and out of all of these comments, there, there, I think, is a motion. It's, it's, it's what we want to do. I move, I move that we approve the standard operating procedure for former members of boards and commissions with the suggestion from Vice Mayor Freeman to change this article under interviews so that it will read, "The city council shall hold interviews for the full-term positions of the school board, period." And the deletion of everything beyond that, plus the next sentence, and the final sentence should read, "The council may also hold interviews for any other appointment as may be desired." Second. Okay, we, we have a motion made and seconded.
Okay, I'll start the discussion. How do we know, when is it going to be? Can one person say, "I want to have the interview"? Would that be enough if I said, "Hey, I don't know this person," and even though they come with strong recommendations from you and you and you, I still want to be on the interview? Would that be enough to actually start an interview?
Historically, Councilman Hucks and I have held interviews in the library meeting rooms of candidates that we didn't know that we thought, well, we just wanted to interview. Yeah, that's, historically, it's a way to...
But my question is, can one person request, like, a council interview and have that? Because there's nothing in here that stops me if I think, believe, and says, "Councilman can call and talk to the individual." The individual or the individual, but I'm talking about an actual interview process as versus that person getting seven phone calls from seven individuals.
Well, I, I just want to pass on a little history information on that also, in that in the past, there've been several times that I wanted to do it, we were in the central precinct, and I had to make the nomination. And so, even though the full council didn't interview, I did. Had I had any question, I would have talked to the rest of the council, say, "Look, you know, we've got two applicants here, and I've got questions about one, because I've caught both of them." And so, I would, I would continue to do that, even though it's not required. If we have somebody that needs to be, that needs to be appointed or is applying to be appointed, if I didn't know that person, I would call and talk to them in any case. I would hold an interview.
I'm just looking at that, perhaps, it might get to a decision. Well, you know, Carrie brings in the name, recommends them highly and stuff like that, and then I say, "Well, I would like to have an interview with them because they're going to sit on the economic development authority," and now there's ill feelings because I wanted to talk to them about something that they're holding a financial sway on things that go on in the city, which is the only reason, like, because I bring up the planning commission, the economic development authority, as well as the school board.
Well, I would strongly suspect that if any council member realized that on those positions, if there was a financial input, okay, or something that may be of concern, if they talked to the rest of the council, I think we would hold an interview in any case. I mean, we have the option to do that. If you knew something or had questions about somebody's comments and said something to me, I would, I would say, "Yeah, let's talk to the rest of the council members and do that." We have that option.
And if you want to interview anybody, you can do that.
And I think that second, I think that second sentence implies that if somebody suggests we hold any of these boards or commissions, that it's, if it's a consensus of the council, then we will have full council interviews. If it's not a consensus, then you have your own interview. And we, you know, we interact all the time. And that interaction is what put that motion on the floor, by the way.
And we generally know a lot of people.
Right, right.
We talk to them usually a lot of time before they apply.
The only other sentence in that paragraph will be, "The council may also hold interviews for any other appointment as may be desired." Everybody got that? Questions, any call? Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Fy?
Yeah, I don't like it, but I like everything else in there, and you all did a great job putting it together, so I say aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Comments, city manager? Boss, anything?
Just a few things. Thank you. Just wanted to highlight, council is aware of this, but the last of our fifth generation of micro parks is under construction now in front of the Wendy's. If you haven't noticed what that in the last couple of days, that's what that is. And we're going to take a little break for a while, but that would be the third one we've done in the last, in the last year. And the folks at Wendy's are very pleased it's there. And we thought about putting it closer to the main intersection, but the proximity to the main intersection itself was the reason we moved it a little bit further away, just for safety for all involved. And lastly, I had an occasion yesterday to attend with my wife the Bull Fest, I believe is what they called it, over there between the Moore Building and the post office. And it was a nice community event. It was nice to see a number of our merchants also participating either there or also participating at the same time. Some of those merchants are not typically even open on Sunday. What was open, and so that was a nice, nice first event.
It was.
So, ahead, sir.
Okay, David?
Thank you, Gordon. Yes, sir. I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to recognize a very special and hardworking group of people that work behind the scenes. Most, most of the time, nobody sees the hard work that these people put in to ensure that these meetings are efficient and successful, most of the time twice a month. So to our assistant city manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, to our assistant to the city manager, Ms. Kim Healy, to our executive assistant, Ms. Kristi Snap, and I know our new finance director, Ms. Lee Etheridge, has been contributing mightily to these past meetings. Also, I'd like to recognize and thank the IT Resource Department from PCOston City Public Schools, Ms. Alicia Barefoot, Ms. Jennifer Canelo, Ms. Kim Montalvo, Mr. Josh Montalvo, Mr. Michael Thompson, Mr. Jason Ernstson. So thanks so much for all y'all do.
Thank you, David. That's well, well said. Ms. Green?
I'd like to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Mobile Food Pantry at the Old City Hall, ten to noon. The host this time is Tabernacle United Methodist Church in St. Timothy's. Bunch of people are working, so everybody that's interested in it, please come out.
Great event, buddy. Keith?
Yes, I just wanted to say I attended the Easter egg hunt. I didn't get any because the little ones were out there picking them up for me. But there were about four billion Easter eggs hidden throughout that park. I just, you couldn't walk without tripping over one. And then little kids were dressed up so nice and purty and, you know, in the rainbow outfits and all that kind of stuff. It was just a lot of fun. And I didn't get my picture taken with Easter Bunny, but I know that in his heart, he wished I had been there. But it was a great, Parks and Rec and MS Baptist Church did a fantastic job on that.
Lovely event. It was well done. Cliff?
I'd like to second the comments made so far, and to thank everyone at home who's paying attention to the city government is very important.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Hucks's comments is one of the things that just makes it so easy for us to do our job because we have sort of those people that put all this together, so we heartily concur with that.
Sure, right. All right. Open for a motion to adjourn. A motion, Mr. Mayor? Second. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fy?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Then we are adjourned.